I guess it's about time. We welcome everybody here and we thank you for coming. Please come back and see us again. In order.
Okay, we'll stand for the invocation of pledge.
Mr. Brad.
Mr. Brad, by the way, thank you for allowing us to be here this morning. Thank you for allowing us to live in Jackson County. Thank you for everything that you do for us day to day. We thank you for our blessings, our known blessings and our unknown blessings. God, we ask that you lead God and direct us in every decision that's made this morning, in Christ's name.
That and the flaws is two things you learn until it has to track out. It's learned about it and turn it and stuff.
Next up is approval of the agenda, which I have two items under section four, number seventeen, which is board approval of revision one, an addendum to APHI of service agreement and number eighteen, which is request board ratification of equitable sharing agreement and certification.
Chairman, I'll offer a motion that the agenda be approved with two additions that Ms. Daniels spelled out.
Back to second.
Got two good seconds and a motion. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Okay.
Move along. Thank you, ma'am.
Next item is board recognition of employees for years of service. We're going to begin with recognizing Kevin Stanlin.
I don't think any.
He probably speak of getting water out of the road.
Okay, well, we will move to the next. If he comes in, we will circle back around to him. Otherwise, we will recognize him next meeting. Susanna Gaston. Deborah.
Hey, y'all.
That's all right.
Deborah Hines, I'm the library director and this is Susanna Gaston and she's my assistant director. And I celebrated my tenth anniversary earlier this year and Susanna is doing it, you know, today. And I always have liked somebody, Susanna was from Georgiana. She moved to Marietta and we hope she doesn't go to Savannah. We want her to stay here. Susanna is dependable and diligent and, you know, she's like the best person I could have chosen, you know, to be the second incoming. She, she has, you know, a point of view that is always valuable. Before I ever do anything, I'm coming, I'll call them and they'll say, you know, what do you think? You know, and she'll tell me, you know, and so her being honest like that is also really wonderful. But I, you know, I'm so happy that she's been with me for ten years and I hope it's another ten, maybe not for many.
And we're glad, we're glad to have you. Would you like to place us?
So if, if y'all will step to the side and then we'll go through the next ones and then we'll, at the end, we'll have the chairman come down for a photo. Okay.
Expect that good of a recommendation for all the board members in time to come, that's.
Okay, next we have Quentin Young.
Morning Commissioners. This morning I have Mr. Quentin Young. He is celebrating five years of service for Jackson County Board of Commissioners under the Fire Rescue Department. The name Quentin has a Latin origin that means gift from God, strength and determination. Effectually known as Q, he is married to Dre and they had three children. In his spare time, he enjoys spending time with his family, fishing and going on ATV trail rides. Quentin came to work with Jackson County Fire Rescue in 2019 full-time after beginning his career with the City of Marietta Fire Rescue in 2014. He currently holds the rank of firefighter EMT and works primarily at Station Two in Graceville. The character quality that I selected for Quentin is flexibility versus resistance. And that character quality means not becoming attached to ideas or plans which could be changed by my authorities. Quentin is one of the most happiest and flexible employees. He always has a smile and he never meets a stranger each and every day. Throughout the course of his hiring and transitioning employees to perimeter position, Q has had to move stations and shifts temporarily to help grow other employees. Q is known for keeping his units clean and taking care of all tasks with no supervision. His flexibility and selflessness shows that he is for his department, coworkers and the county. Q's flexibility and commitment to his job shows that he is able to remain dynamic and tackle and complete every task that is thrown his way. His smile and positivity resonates through our department and reminds me also to remain flexible in any job that comes my way. Quentin, thank you for five years of loyal service to the county.
Thank you.
Lord appreciates you as well.
And lastly, we have Mr. Derek Cruz.
Morning.
Good morning.
All right, so this morning we're gonna recognize Mr. Derek Cruz, the five years of service. He's actually got a little more time than that. He thought he wanted to leave us a couple times, but he finds his way back home. So this time he's come back eleven twenty-one of nineteen. Derek has been married to a Shana for twenty-three years. They have two children. His hobbies include racing and aggravating ladies in office, which he excels. His name is of German descent, meaning ruler of the people. Derek worked with Roden Bridge twice before, originally as equipment operator two, driving a dump truck, then moving up to an equipment operator four, operating the grader. The third time was a charm. In two thousand nineteen, he returned as equipment operator four and was promoted to district supervisor in November of two thousand twenty-one. The character quality we chose for Derek was dependability versus inconsistency. That means fulfilling what I can send him to do, even if it means unexpected sacrifice. Derek fills a gaps whenever possible, whether a crew member is out or something unexpected arises. Last week, he was on a grader. He endeavors to stay on top of what is happening in his district, doing what needs to be done without hesitation. He also works on training his crew members to expand their skill set. We know we can depend on Derek to do what it takes to get the job done. And when something unexpected comes up, he will find a way to take care of the problem with a good attitude while continuing with his other projects. Derek, we appreciate you. Thank you.
Okay, that was the last one. If you'd like to come down for a photo with him, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for your service.
All right, before we move on to the next item, I did just want to personally thank the staff that were recognized today. It really is something that you don't, you can't quantify. An employee has been here a long time, knows their job really well until they're gone. And then you suddenly know what they were offering to the organization. And so we never want to take longevity for granted. We appreciate all of you. And I do just want to say a special thank you to Derek Cruz for his, I've had experiences with all of them on some level. But he's a, he's frequently in my office from time to time because he cares so much about his employees and willing to, to come to admin for resources and to reach out when they need help. And I just want to say I recognize that. Thank you, Derek.
I'd like to say something on Derek. He's a district two supervisor and I've called him from time to time. And he's always the same attitude every time you call him, willing to try to do, get something done. And a lot of time when I call him, he say, well, I'm on a grader today or I'm on something else today. So the grader operator is out and he, same attitude, willing to go. And I've seen him on a weekend on a grader.
Well, I'll also add that Derek Cruz.
Thinking for that, I mean, he, he's always, when I call him, he's the same for him.
He, uh, not, he also taught me to drive a grader. He did. He put me in one and I was freaking out and he just pushed the thing and made me drive it.
Driver, your brother. He ain't did that to me yet.
He will, he will. Okay, thank y'all.
Dependence is a wonderful thing. Yeah, it is. Yeah.
Okay, the next item we have is board adoption of resolution for Lincoln Cottage sale. So you've all actually already approved the part, the sale of this cottage. We just need the resolution for closing and it's attached in your packet.
Offer a motion that we adopt the resolution and authorize chairman to sign.
Second.
Motion in a second. Move along with that request. Yeah. We would, all in favor.
Okay.
Everything unanimous in that one.
Okay, now, next is request board approval to set a public hearing for Dryden Properties and Development. So request to set a public hearing for January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five at nine AM for a general development order, development order to develop a seven thousand two hundred square foot building for manufacturing and sales with approximately sixteen thousand five hundred fifty-nine square feet of concrete and asphalt to be used as vehicular use. This project was proposed to be located on the south side of Commercial Park Drive, approximately one thousand two hundred seventy feet west of the intersection of Highway seventy-one South and Commercial Park Drive in unincorporated Jackson County.
Some moves, chairman.
I'll move. Second. Question.
Mr. Dr. Spires.
Go ahead, Doc. Yeah.
He, he, he made a motion.
All right, motion in a second. Approve. That's your recommendation.
Yeah.
All in favor by the right hand. Unanimous.
Okay, the next item is board approval to set public hearing for Twin Ponds Road Mini Farm Subdivision. This is a request to set a public hearing for January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five at nine AM for a general development order to develop a nine-watt minor residential subdivision with lots ranging from two point two zero acres to five acres. The proposed subdivision will be situated on the corner of Twin Ponds Road and Fairview Road in unincorporated Jackson County.
Chairman, I'll offer a motion to set a public hearing for January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five at nine o'clock AM for the Twin Ponds Road Mini Farm Subdivision.
Motion in a second. Approve. Go ahead. Move along.
The last item under community development is board approval to set a public hearing for Love's RV Stop modification. A request to set a public hearing for January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five at nine AM for a modification to previously approved general development order for Love's RV Stop. The request is to add fourteen additional RV spaces and modify proposed amenities and improvements. The thirty-five point five acre parcel is located on the north side of Dillmore Road, approximately eight hundred and seventy-five feet east of the intersection of Highway two thirty-one and Dillmore Road.
Is this, um, I know that we approved a development order for RV spaces out there previously. Is this for fourteen additional to the thirty-two?
I believe so, yes.
Fourteen additional to the thirty-two spaces. Okay.
Yes, sir, about municipal water and municipal sewer. Does that tie back to the money that we received yesterday from the governor for the sewer?
Well, that will improve that lift station. Yes, sir.
Mr. Daniel, is this associated with Love's truck stop in any way?
Yes.
Okay.
It is associated, yeah.
Have they started on the initial one yet, the original?
As it began developing the. Is there a representative here? Would you like to speak? I mean, it's up to you to see, not in your head.
I'm right on with it.
Jason Kye, Chipotle Engineering. Answering kind of questions off my head.
I think everything spelled out in the, in the information in the proposal. I don't have any questions. I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Anytime timeframe set to begin this or?
Hopefully January, as soon as we get final modification approved. The project had went out to bid, bid to come back a little high. They found some areas where we could reduce impervious footprint and then trade off for taking out some of the amenities and adding in RV spaces. So total impervious area has actually been reduced slightly. Total limits of disturbance have stayed the same. But at the end of day, Love's was able to find a way to get a little bit more bang for the buck on the development.
Mr. Chairman.
How long you need it to take you to build it?
Should be about four months.
Question, Mr. Chairman. Question. Is this located clear to close to truck stop?
Yes, sir. If you turn on Dillmore Road, instead of taking a left into the travel stop, go across the creek and it's the wooded parcel on the left.
Thank you.
That, was that a former site of a road building right there?
No, sir. It's a wooded parcel.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for Love RV Stop, January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Have a motion in a second to approve. Board, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Get away from that as of all.
Okay, under reports and requests, we have the consent agenda items.
To motion that consent agenda be approved as included in the package.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Everybody in favor by the right hand. unanimous, going pretty smooth, madam. Go ahead.
Okay, next we have board approval of volunteer fire department grant match for Town of Sneed. This is a request for seventy-five hundred dollars to help the Town of Sneed Volunteer Fire Department match a Florida Forest Service grant.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the grant match for Town of Sneed, seventy-five hundred dollars.
Second.
Have a motion in effect to approve that. Any discussion more than that?
We're both in a, all in favor, so unanimous.
Okay, the next item is board approval of updated facilities use agreement with Chipola Amateur Radio Club. Update of the facilities use agreement for facilities located at twenty-six ninety-one Endeavor Boulevard. Reorganization of the club requires an update of the use agreement to remove former president's information and add CARC information.
There were substantial changes to this agreement. It was approved and passed.
Correct.
Offer a motion that we approve the updated facilities use agreement.
Motion in a second to approve. All in favor, we hear right there. Move along.
Okay, request board approval of renewal of the MOA with Chipola Amateur Radio Club. This is between Jackson County Emergency Management for Emergency Communications Assistance and EOC Facility Use.
Chairman, move approval.
Okay.
I have a motion by Dr. Spire. I will say that. All in favor, raise your hand.
Next is board approval of the final invoice for Bondi's Ford with repairs to fire engine number three sixty-three. At the last meeting, you all approved the amount of eighteen thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars and five cents. Unfortunately, after the truck left, there was some additional repairs identified that had to be taken back to the shop, which Chief Bruner could speak to any details y'all might want on that. But the total invoice was twenty-one thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents.
Question.
We feel like the, all of the repairs, all of the necessary repairs, Chief Bruner, have been made now. I'm assuming truck's in good shape now.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a warranty?
That's for the time of one.
On the work they did, there's no warranty?
Oh, there is, correct. Yes, there is. And that has to work the files or plate manager.
What's the duration of the warranty?
I have to give it a plate manager.
Okay.
Could you let us know the next time you come to the board meeting, please, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's, 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 Dr. Spire.
We were looking at. Move forward.
That, all right, I have a motion in effect to approve to add on to the fire truck. Which is sad that it wouldn't leave the parking lot, but anyway, all in favor, six, five, three.
Okay. Next item is board approval of London Road Change Order Number One, Closeout Documents and Final Pay Request. This project was awarded to Anderson Columbia. The work's been inspected and ready to be closed. A change order for a deduction of seven thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-four to zero out the contract for underruns is attached, bringing the total contract to three hundred and thirty-three thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents.
I move to approve the change order and the certificate of this completion and the final pay request and authorize the chairman to sign.
Chairman.
I have a question. Did you say Anderson Columbia? This is, uh, says that southeast construction.
Where does it say that at? Where does it say that at?
Next, the next item southeast.
Oh, okay, I want to hear.
Um, yeah, so we're on number six, which is page one eleven.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Sorry.
That's okay.
I have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Yes, sir, Mr. Brad. All in favor, six and five, say a hand. Move along.
Okay, next item is request board approval to award Holly Timber Road to the low bidder on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Five sealed bids were open for Holly Timber Road and southeast construction being the low bidder in the amount of two million sixty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars and sixty-five cents. This project will be funded by FDOT Scott Program. Staff recommends awarding the project.
When I make a motion, it's approved.
Second.
A motion in effect to approve this. All in favor. Right here. I have a couple of questions for you, Mr. Chris. They got ample time to build this road, this group. Would we keep close attention to that, so as to where when they run out of time? We've had problems with those people on the Blue Springs Road. My back feels it every day. So would we please pay attention to that as far as the days that they might want to use as far as rainy days? Could we be about that extra especially? Uh, I think that we have had some difficulties there with that group. And if you got, if that group has a person present today, if you want to come forward, if you don't, that's okay.
Jeffrey or Rhett or Willan, who's, who, or which one of our engineering persons is doing CEI on that? Do we know?
Oh, no, I tend to forget the, the R and B.
Okay, the R and B.
Just a special request by the chairman. Thank you very much. All in favor, six, five, raise your right hand.
Okay, the next item, number eight, is board approval of the contract twenty-three twenty-four dash seventeen, Project Jaws Professional Engineering. Our design and CI services with DHM. This contract has been approved by the grant agency and we do recommend approval.
Recommendation, what's raised at the board?
I move to approve the contract and authorize Mr. Westbrook as the chairman to sign.
A motion in a second. A motion made for the chairman to be able to sign it when it gets finished. All in favor, but by, by, all right, move along.
Uh, the next one is board approval of twenty-three twenty-four dash seventeen, Project Jaws Engineering Work Authorization for DHM Engineering. Total project cost is currently estimated and funding funded at three million three hundred and seventy-five thousand six hundred dollars. This work authorization for engineering is four hundred and twenty-one thousand. And this is coming from a rural infrastructure grant.
Chairman, I have a question. Could you elaborate on the Project Jaws, what's it all about for me, please?
This is a facility that's being built out in Endeavor Industrial Park. And so we've had multiple iterations, but what has been settled on, I don't think it's a secret anymore, is it, what the project is? Um, I don't think it is, but I better not say, but I can talk with you more one-on-one, but it is a manufacturing facility. And so we received a grant to be able to do a portion of the infrastructure for that night. Yeah.
Probably be safe for Commissioner Spires and Commissioner Westbrook to maybe sit down with your team and kind of
Absolutely.
Give them a little bit of a summary of this, because as Willan said, it's gone through a number of iterations and changes over the course of, uh, uh, over the course of the development of this project and bring those two, two new commissioners up to speed. We very benefit.
I believe this one has already been released, but just out of abundance of caution, I'll be sure.
Is that grant?
Thank you.
Money involved in that?
Yes, sir.
I, I make a motion to approve.
I say to make motions, Mr. Don, for a second. All in favor, right hand. Move along.
Okay, the next item is board approval of contract twenty-three twenty-four dash thirty-six, Endeavor Convention Center Concessionaire with the Jackson County Chamber of Commerce. On November twenty-sixth, the board voted to award this RFP. Staff have negotiated the terms of the contract with the chamber representatives, which are here today. If y'all have any questions, there is one slight change that I believe may have just been a typo. On page one eighty-five, there is a reference to service contractor must coordinate training for staff, including training for severe weather protocols, event security protocols and safety protocols for rodeo-related sporting events. I don't think we're anticipating rodeo-related sporting events there. Uh, so just wanted to note that, that there won't be rodeos in the convention center.
The question was left over for maybe the Hag Center.
I think so.
Question for Ms. Jordan. Is that contract in order?
Yes, sir. I didn't even catch that.
You didn't what?
I didn't even catch the rodeo thing, but yes, it's standard park.
I know that with the nearing completion of the renovation of that, probably sometime in March, it's critical that we move forward with starting to market that facility and trying to get things lined up so that as soon as it is complete, we can start hosting events there. So it's kind of critical that we move forward with this and looking forward to the chamber working on this. I think they'll do a good job with marketing it and laces out there in the audience. I know that you'll hit this, hit the ground running as far as trying to get things lined up so that we can start using that facility. It's going to be a wonderful facility and looking forward to seeing it being used.
I think y'all got Mr. Don, if it don't help y'all fix it all.
Yeah, it's a good thing.
All right, you've heard the recommendation. What's the pledge of the board?
Make a motion to approve it.
Motion didn't make.
Second.
Yeah, I have seconds too, though. All in favor, raise your hand. Moving on.
Okay, the next item is board approval of contract RB twenty-four twenty-five dash zero five, Annual Paving Striping with Getler and Getler. You all awarded this at your last meeting. This is a contract, the actual contract for one year with two one-year renewal, renewals available. You all awarded this at your last meeting, this is a contract, the actual contract for one year with two one year renewal renewals available.
I think staff has been uh very satisfied with the work that Getler and Getler has done, I noticed that they uh. Uh Jeffrey and Rhett, they just got through a striking fourth street. Uh work looked real, real good, so uh I'll offer a motion that we approve the contract.
Nice. Thank you, by Mr. Bryant. Thank you, by Mr. Donfro. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise the five right hand.
Okay, the next item is board approval of the lease at Endeavor with Lord Cattle L L C. Uh so this came up at your last meeting, you all approved to move forward, but we formalized it into a lease agreement. And we added in some of the things that were mentioned uh during that meeting, so I think that it's uh pretty well what you all requested as far as that is.
And and the only thing I think we discussed and uh was discussed with Rhett yesterday that uh. Uh they will be responsible for paying the property taxes.
Correct.
And that's included in the contract.
That's right.
Offer a motion that uh the lease with uh Lord Cattle L L C be approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the contract. All in favor, right? Unanimous.
All right, the next item is request board approval of change order number twelve for the Endeavor Convention Center. Uh this is change order will reduce the contract price by twenty thousand four hundred eleven dollars and seventy eight cents through direct purchase orders and self tax savings.
But the recommendations was the pleasure of the board.
Make a question. Have a question.
Yes, sir.
I I know uh in the last year or so, we've had reductions because of the tax thing. Are we able to use that money back into the facility?
Yeah. And y'all had kind of both. In fact, at some point we'll bring kind of an overall picture, because you've added some, you've taken some. Um but I think it's gone back into other things that we've added back in, yes.
Any other question?
You made a motion.
I made a motion.
A motion. Second.
I'll be second, yeah.
Got two of them, pretty good. All in favor, we take five right hand.
But should the chairman, um it's four to zero, I have to abstain from voting, because I've got a conflict of interest in this. Uh offering to do in the architectural services.
I'll take one off. That was four.
Okay. Um. Next item is board approval of tank inspection proposal from U S Tank. This is a request to declare an emergency slash sole source to use U S Tank from Chipley to perform our five year tank inspection. To comply with F D E P guidelines. We had a previous contract with another company, but they have since ceased providing these services, the inspection must be completed this calendar year. That is twenty thousand five hundred and it will come from, there are some budgeted funds as well as excess fees.
I mean, excess dollars. Go ahead, I was gonna say the excess dollars come from contingency.
I think the excess fees are actually from constitutional excess fees that they'll be submitting back.
Okay, how many tanks do you know?
How many tanks, Rhett?
Oh, wait. Offer a motion that the uh tank inspection services proposal from U S Tank be approved.
I have a motion and a second. You approved all, sing the five, raise the hand. True.
Okay.
That's a must, that are. Through the through the state, through the D E P. That uh I'd like to see them perform those inspections, but anyway.
Thought you wanted to hear.
That'd be fine, it it's just, that's more or less in in a joke. Uh. About the only way to do it is measure. Do some measuring, getting up in that tank measuring, not a easy task.
Okay, for discussion of state holidays, uh in the past, Governor DeSantis has given state workers additional days for Christmas and New Year's holidays. Currently, county staff receive Christmas Eve, Christmas Day and New Year's Day off. We're just requesting board discussion and direction on following the state on additional days during Christmas and New Years. So that y'all meeting again, so if it comes up. Fine, if y'all want to leave just what we have, fine, if you want to say, if he gives additional days, I just would like the clarity on the front end.
The Christmas is on a Tuesday or Wednesday?
Christmas Eve is a Tuesday and Christmas is a Wednesday. So he possibly could give the twenty third, he may not, um but just looking for board direction.
Chairman, I'd like to move that we follow whatever guidelines the state decides to implement as far as the county employees are concerned.
I'd like a motion and a second. Follow the state's guideline, all in favor, right hand. I guess the governor, we'll ask him to send us that money too. Maybe it'd be like a little more fair.
The last item on the agenda, and then we'll get into our additions, is at the last meeting, um I told you all I would bring back. Our recommendations on filling in the final appointment that we, most of these did not change. Um so these aren't all of your appointments, but this pretty much gave every commissioner two appointments. So if you're okay with what is in the packet, um that's what we recommend.
Uh Chairman, I make a motion that we uh go with a recommendation of the staff.
Second, that motion.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve the request, all in favor by right hand. Okay, does that complete us, Madam?
Uh that does on the agenda, and then we have two additions. Um so number seventeen under section four. Is request board approval of revision one, an addendum to A P H I S service agreement. This is to add feral swine removal to this contract, uh we have an issue out of the ag complex. Um on Penn Avenue and around the jail, that we need some assistance with.
No question. Is this the same people that does the beef? Yes.
So just adding additional dollars to their contract, or how how are they being paid for feral swine removal? On a per animal basis or?
So they bill hourly at the rate in the packet, and then if we had the budgeted amount of seven thousand, whatever was previously approved. And then as that dwindles down, we can come back and add more funds to the contract, but it's based off hourly rate.
So so this is a problem just in a very small geographical area, or is this county wide or?
Well, it's nationwide, really, but we've just recently, really over the summer, right, chief, around the jail had some issues. And um it's obviously been getting worse and worse, so they've made it up to the ag complex up around the sidewalks and the master gardener area. Retention ponds around the jail, just really wreaking havoc around the the county facilities out there, so since we have an existing contract with A F S under U S D A. They offer the uh pig trapping services, so we're asking to add that under the contract.
I actually was on Penn Avenue, went by the ag complex, I think it was last week. And saw what I thought looked like feral pigs out there rooting up, and I thought like, that can't be it, they must be doing something out there, but.
No, sure.
Invading invading the city, yeah.
Yep.
Who manages the town?
To that point, we've had uh citizens reach out all the way up from Old Cottondale. Um down uh English Drive, English Road, something right there off of Penn.
Yeah.
Um they've had citizens come to city commission meetings, so I've been talking with Maran and P D, making sure, you know, we're following all the rules for them. And um I think this is the best route to go right now, so if approved, they will send the uh trap route tomorrow, do a site visit, come up with a game plan. Uh we're going to request a minimum of two traps in different locations. Uh they say they have the capability to do more if if they see fit and um have. Almost uh. Any resource you could imagine for pig trapping.
Well, if they're if they're, you know, the the evidence that I saw, they were out by Penn Avenue, out by the highway, and that could be a a safety issue as well with uh getting out in the highway and causing an accident, so yeah, it's something that we need to.
Yeah, one actually got hit on Penn last week, yeah.
Who who manages the time?
Yeah. They submit the uh, they're our, basically, it's not really a timesheet, but they submit reports as to when they're out in the field. And then um we verify it based on, uh we'll have, so Billy Bailey, our new project manager, will be their point of contact, so he'll be out with them. Verifying, you know, captures and time spent and everything like that.
What, when they're captured, when they're trapped, well, what do they do with animals, like remove them to. Obviously a different location.
They are uh, they're terminated and disposed of.
Do you anticipate them being any better at this than they are to be?
Yes.
I hate to say it that way.
I I know, I had the same thought, that was my first question, like, do you have the time to work this how it needs to be done? Because, I mean, setting up two or three traps takes a lot of time, have to monitor them daily, um so they use, you know, cell cameras that they can get real time feedback on. What's being trapped, what times they're coming in, and maximize their time in and out. Um so we're only billed on their time here, if there's nothing in the trap, they already know via the remote cameras and they won't waste a trip. So they got it down to be very efficient, but that was my first question, do you have the time to do this and be assured as they do?
Can?
Well, they're in business of it, basically, well, can afford the time, but.
Can we monitor that for, I mean, do we have to sign a contract? A contract with them now?
Well, it's amending our existing contract, adding the swine, the feral pigs into the what we have now.
You've had experience with them before with that?
Not on the pigs, but we had them for several years on the beavers.
I don't have a problem with if they'll do a better job.
Yes, sir. Told him same thing.
One way you can stop them from coming in, but it may not be feasible or 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 a good place to put it, if you put a liquor fence up and they won't come in.
Right. We're looking at all kinds of stuff, and once we start trapping, we got a quite a bit of work ahead of us, you know, correcting some of these areas goes. Up around the jail, retention ponds, I mean, they need to be leveled out, get them back where we can maintain them with lawnmowers, and that that alone is going to be a pretty good task, so. We want to make sure we eradicate the issue first and then start dressing the place back up.
Are they up there around the corner for pits?
Haven't seen them that far up, uh primarily from the jail back to north, basically.
It it mentions, Chairman, it mentioned that the euthanized animal will be disposed of on county property.
No, sir.
As the director of county personnel, is that a?
That's what the agenda item says.
Yes.
They have not discussed that with us um or with me, but we can make that accommodation, we do that now when we dispose of roadkill and all kinds of stuff, so we can use uh one of our. Remote pit locations for disposal.
Offer a motion that the uh contract be a little violent to include feral pig removal.
Second.
No, Donna Brose second, but up fires. All in favor of right hand.
Okay, the last item is request board ratification of equitable sharing agreement. Uh Sheriff Edenfield is requesting board ratification and chairman's signature on the annual E S A C certification submission.
Recommend approval. While here, most. My question. Motion by Mr. Bryant. By Mr. Crutchfield, to approve. All in favor, right hand. That complete the agenda.
So um if you want to give the public an opportunity to speak, and then we, I do have a few round table items.
Be glad to anyone that wants to speak. I would remind you, we have a time limit there, but if you want to speak, you're welcome to this, but. Everybody's happy in here. I wonder, we're all happy in Bascom too. We don't, we don't have a big agenda in Bascom anyway, but anyway.
And then I do have a few items for round table, when you're ready.
Yes, ma'am, I'm ready.
So we have, uh this just was too late to put it on as an addition, but I've spoke with each of you about it. This is uh the ongoing jail roofing project. And so what I have, and I'm gonna just ask if you'll take one and pass it, is a change order that is um directly related to. Uh as I shared with you all, when they took the core samples of the roof. Now they hit metal when they pulled the roof off, found that there was not only metal, but there was also quite a bit of concrete under there. Which changes the way the roof has to be attached, so instead of just fasteners, we've got to glue it. Uh which changed the, changes the contract price by a hundred and sixty thousand, three sixty five, three hundred and sixty five dollars and seventy five cents. So um this is unfortunate, however, uh if. The concrete had been discovered in the beginning, this would have been in the contract anyway, uh it's just of when we found it. So Sarah, did forget to ask you where you want the dollars to come from. So we have two options on where the funding comes from, we do have reserve that you all set aside this year, or we can pull it from the admin building funds, which is where a portion of this project is being funded from anyway. Um I'll let you all decide that.
I guess my question would ask my friend to my left, Mr. Donfro.
Uh you know, it's it's a little bit disappointing that uh they didn't discover this during the exploration phase of their work. But as Ms. Daniels said, uh even if they would have discovered this during the exploration, during the design development. Uh this added cost, it's still been there, we've still been looking at having to adhere the roof instead of mechanically attach it. And as a result of that, we'd have still been purchasing additional adhesors and uh. Wh- you know, whether we would have been paying this exactly now, or maybe getting a little bit better price since it would have been competitively bid as opposed to being a change order, that's, you know, always questioned. Um.
Is that normal?
Yeah, yeah.
That normal?
And and the the fact that it is a concrete roof deck. Uh does mean that they need to fully adhere the the roofing to the concrete as opposed to not mechanically attaching it. So I I think I ask uh Mr. Will, who's here, uh if they uh looked at the uh the flatities and Rhett, and I think Will and uh Jamie. Uh felt like the quantity of additional adhesive was compatible with what needed to be used. My question is this, we also discussed some additional. Uh additional work that's going to have to be addressed at some point in the future, so I think the commission needs to be apprised that there's going to be some additional cost.
Yes, so we don't have anything today, because we're not, they just don't have anything to us, but I think I've shared with all of you that there's additional work coming. Uh. Some expansion joints, a sloping issue that's been identified on the first initial work that they did. And then also different units are having to be ordered based on some um requirements that have changed regarding refrigerant. But none of, I'm not ready for any of that yet, because I don't have prices on anything.
That, does that?
Being said.
Have to be on the same contract, doesn't.
It will be on the same contract, it's the addition and a different change order.
Which will come after the first of the year, when they have all that quantified.
So would we be held up because of the cost, what you think?
No, no, they'll be able to proceed, um none of this is going to hold us up, I don't think.
The refrigerant issue, or an additional or upgraded units, sorry. Uh we do have a a dollar figure on the additional, uh I think it was a hundred and seventy seven thousand additional for the. Updated refrigerant requirement, that'll get all units, all air conditioning units approved and on the way.
So that does need to be approved today?
That does, because we're already uh ten to twelve weeks out on the units, so if we wait till uh January, that would delay significantly.
I think just to, for further explanation, Rhett. When when this design was initially completed, they had selected air conditioning units. But now that they're in the the process of ordering those units, the refrigerant requirements have changed. So it's not only just the refrigerant itself that's going in, there's some, there's some changes to the units themselves as well to accept this different refrigerant. And it's a uh a refrigerant that's got to be used, so there's not only the the additional refrigerant, but some changes to the units themselves, and that's where that. And that's where that additional cost, though. These are, these are large units, um so they're.
Was the refrigerant change due to environmental concerns or?
That's my understanding, yes.
Federal regulations, yes, sir.
Yeah, so if, so if we want to just take it one thing at the time, what you have is the change order specifically for the glue. The the change that's happening as a result of it being a concrete.
And that change order amount is a hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and sixty five dollars and seventy five cent.
Yeah.
I'll offer a motion that we approve this as a change order. And take those dollars from the administration fund, since that's where we're funding the the original overage anyway.
Do we need a motion on that on comments?
Yeah, that was.
That was a motion.
Thanks.
That's right, second, Mr. Donfro's excellent, that's explanation of what we had. I've had to lean on him. I'm not a construction man. But anyway, all in favor, take a bye, but saying I, all for unanimous consent.
Okay, the second item that now that Rhett explains that, we actually do need a decision on the units. Because they're waiting on the approval, although I wish I had a change order before you. Um I guess we need maybe a not to exceed amount.
I think that'd be sufficient. So they have not submitted, they're hoping to have all this by the end of the week. We told them, you know, we kinda got this morning to be done. For uh January, so they're hoping to give us some updated numbers, but the estimate right now is a hundred and seventy seven thousand. For the increased or the di- the difference in the units and the refrigerant itself. So I feel like a not to exceed amount of one seventy seven would be sufficient to keep rolling.
One seventy seven even, or you wanna give a little wiggle room to that?
One eighty.
One eighty, I think. I'll offer a motion that we approve a future change order in the amount of a hundred and eighty thousand. In amount not to exceed a hundred and eighty thousand dollars uh for um changing the rooftop units and the refrigerant. Needed to service those units.
And you also want that to come from admin building?
Also coming from the admin dollars as well.
Well, I I would entertain a second.
Second.
Motion made in second, Mr. Donfro, Mr. Bryant.
Is this?
All in favor.
Just a question if I may, is this thing, all the units haven't been replaced or changed?
Every one of them is being upgraded, the entire facility, nineteen units total.
The vote now?
Uh before I go to the third and final item with the jail, just really from perspective for our new commissioners and as well as the public. This is actually Hurricane Michael project, um and it's mostly grant funded as a result of Hurricane Michael. And uh a lot of the units were damaged or torn off the roof and so. And they're they're old and so we're we're working through the process of just totally revamping all the units and the and the roof. And um so that's where this project is stemming from. The last item I have is. As I've also shared with all of you, is we're having a little bit of a heating issue in some of the units as a result of this project. Um and the timing of everything. So the contractor's solution was really expensive. It was a. About a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh however, uh Will Hamilton, who works, he's our maintenance director out at the jail, he came up with a solution. That would actually provide us a solution in the future if we ever run into something like this again. And that's running uh two twenty power into this area and providing, um what kind of heaters are they, Rhett?
So they're just electric radi- radiator heaters, um so they'll be run uh by a professional electrician. From the breaker panel, running new service or new, from the breaker to the heater itself. Um so he's got some quotes on that in my hand right now. The uh. Additional electrical work itself will be fifty fifty one thousand and then for the heaters. Uh individually, we're looking at doing thirteen to cover the square footage needed for the areas that are impacted of sixteen thousand, one hundred and sixty. So a total uh fee of seventy thousand, one hundred and ten dollars.
But with that.
Mister D, you want to speak?
You got the total?
Yeah. Oh. Yes, seventy thousand, this one's it.
Um so two, few things with this one is while this is a lot of money. This is actually a solution for the future. If we ever have a problem again, we have a solution uh to provide heat. Secondly, uh this can come from fine and forfeiture funds with the jail. Now that will pretty much take care of all of their contingency. Um I also need y'all to declare it an emergency if you're so inclined to make a motion.
So so the solution that was proposed by the contractor was basically a true temporary solution. Portable heaters, set them up on a temporary basis, and then when they were no longer used, those would go away.
And that was about a hundred and sixty thousand.
This will actually provide electrical service to wall mounted radiant heaters. That will be put in place and then once they're no longer used, we'll take those radiant heaters. Store them somewhere at the jail and should we have problems in the future, those radiant heaters, the electrical will still be there. Those radiant heaters can be brought back in, plugged in, and so it's a, it's a. It's a temporary solution, but it's a more permanent solution.
Correct.
Yeah, and and done, what was the overall cost of that?
For the electrical work and the heaters themselves, seventy thousand, four hundred and ten dollars.
No, no, heat only?
Heat only. So and that's important too. So uh state requires uh the. Jail standards require to provide heat, um so that's really coming into winter. That's really what we're worried about. So in order to maintain state standards for inmates, we have to provide heat and this is the quickest and cheapest solution.
When you say quickest, Rhett, what's the, what's the timing on getting the electrical uh electrical service there and getting the radiant heaters in place? I mean, we're looking at a couple of weeks or?
Probably less than, so the, I don't have a delivery date on the quote for the units, but as far as the electrical work, they're usually mobilized within a week.
And Kenny Strange will actually be doing the work?
Yes, sir.
And since this was an emergency, we can enter into a contract with him without having to go through a uh uh, you know, competitive bid process.
Once you declared an actual emergency.
Yeah, so that's what we need to do now is declare, declare an emergency relative to providing this solution so that we can.
Correct.
Mister D, is that?
After we actually told the representative load at the corner and he ran full trigger, um. The electrician said he's concerned about four people and will take them maybe five days to install everything for four people. Um so hopefully we live in that less than a couple of weeks.
And he he feels, he looked at the existing panels, were these, I don't know, we have capacity there to serve these?
And they do have the option to cut the heat off and give the bane off.
So we're all in compliance.
Just a, just a curiosity question, but may, okay. What makes it necessary that we call this an emergency purchase?
You have to provide heat for the inmates. That's required by state law. If you don't have time to go through a formal procurement process.
Probably no indication that they were going out, just kind of suddenly went out, is that right?
Um well, no, actually, this is part of the construction that's happening on the roof, so they had to remove the units. And so through a series of events, um that, you know, kind of a. If this, it was a chain reaction of events between the the architect, the contractor, ordering, then finding out those units are no longer. Even available, so we have to change what we're getting. Uh it has resulted in there being no units on the, they're not even on the roof, right?
Well, some of them.
They're not connected anyway.
Right.
They have no heat now.
So it has to do with our construction is what has caused the issue.
Yeah, they have no heat now.
Correct.
That's fine. I just like to encourage the staff that when possible, let's try to avoid the emergency purchase um phenomenon. So we can get competitive bidding.
I'll get some fire and stove, but I guess build a fire. But rather, Mister D. We're always, we're in compliance.
Yes, sir.
And you're, y'all are pretty satisfied that that contractor can perform at that amount of day.
Oh, yeah.
I'll offer a motion.
We'll take.
That uh due to the circumstances uh related to the construction of the Jackson County jail. That we declared an emergency situation, allowing us to bypass our typical competitive bid situation. Uh allow us to enter into a contract or enter into an agreement with uh Kenny Strange, uh electric. To uh move forward with uh providing heat on the way of an electrical service to the jail so that we can get heat on a temporary basis.
I'll motion, you look, Donfro. On second by Miss Crutchfield. Proceed with this emergency order to bid and spend. Everybody want to vote for that crazy guy? Free to go.
All right, thank y'all very much. Uh just a couple more things on my side. So we have a, also to do with the jail, but a little bit different situation. If y'all want to take one and pass this. So because, and this comes up a lot around the holidays, because we only have the one meeting in December, there's time constraints. So this is a payout for the contractor for the roof at the jail. That has not been approved yet through, it's not gone through the process. Um however, if they have to wait until January for any decision from the board, um that would be really challenging for their business. And so what we're asking is that the board approve this contingent on it being approved by the architect. And then, of course, staff and finance approving it as well. So normally that would all come through the process and then y'all would approve. We're just asking y'all to prove it contingent on the process happening after today and then they can receive their payment. But we're not actually asking you to approve this payout particularly just that once this is approved by their architect. For our architect and staff, that that we can issue the payment without it having to wait until January to come back before you.
And I would imagine with the the original contract amount being two million, six fifty nine. And the total amount completed and stored is one million, six sixty two. We assume a lot of that is gonna be stored materials. Because there there's not been that much work done, so a lot of this has gotta be stored materials, which again, the architect will look at and confirm.
They have, so the architect uh comes out twice a week and the the roofing company. Roofing material provider, two different things, uh also comes out. So the. A majority of the roofing material itself is on site with adhesives and all the, you know, associated materials. So that is a good portion of, however, they also have been working very diligently, so there will be a good amount of man hours involved in that in voice as well.
And they're from where?
The roofing company?
No, the architect.
The architect is in Texas, CRA.
I'll offer a motion that we approve this pay application contingent upon. CRA, the architect of record on this project approving it and authorizing this pay application to be paid once the approval is. Uh gathered by the staff.
Second.
Motion in second, motion by Mr. Donfro, taken by Mr. Bryant. Contingency approval. Anybody got anything else they want to add or take away?
Hey, just got a few more things. We're almost there.
You keep saying that.
I know. Uh uh, I don't need any more money. So Firetruck has an unlimited mile warranty for two years. So we don't have to bring that back to the next meeting. Um and then as the chairman alluded to, just want to make sure the board saw that. Uh we received a rural infrastructure grant this week uh to rehab the Barbara lift station, which I was really proud of. Because uh we had a hard time coming up with a project that fit that criteria. And at the very last minute, I think Rhett said, could we rehab a well and uh or a lift station, I mean. And they um they said, yes, that that fits the criteria. And I think that was around one point six billion dollars. So I was really proud of that. And then um our Christmas party is today at noon. Hope you all will be joining us. And last but not least, um if the chairman will join me out front, we're going to present something to Commissioner Donovan. You two will join us down front.
Second, please.
Um well, y'all will have something you want to add, so we'll do this and then y'all.
Favorite one we're gonna give is we go outside.
So we just want to thank you guys and thank Commissioner Donovan for two years of serving as our chairman. And of course, we're glad you're still around, just as a commissioner, but um you did a really great job and we love to hear from you and staff Matthew a card.
Well, that was almost like this, it was certainly an honor to have had the opportunity to serve as the chairman of this board. I enjoy the most parts of it, but there were a few challenges that we had to deal with, but uh we had a good group to work with. And we've got a good group to work with in the next two years. I have to, Chairman Westbrook will do a great job. No, I really do appreciate this. It's positive. Thank you.
Anyone else got a thing that was, yes, sir. Chairman, if I could, I got two items, and it'll all be two. I've got uh one item in a fixed asset for our financial statement purposes. We report only items above five thousand.
Yes, sir.
Um and what we would like to do is to raise our putting stickers. To above five thousand. Um and.
Thank you.
We would still put stickers on. Bill, still put stickers on items that uh. We would need to track over under five thousand to above a thousand. Um possibly laptop computers, that would be on the parking headed faces. But what we found is there's some, the cost of things have gone up so much, we're putting stickers on. Just about everything now. And so it's it's just tremendous amount of work to get those stickers out to the uh people. I know Charlie's one, he keeps all his uh an inventory of all this stuff anyhow. But then when I go out there and I try to put a sticker on a, give me an example, Charlie, a little time, yes. And so uh these are items that are not gonna walk off, but they're not above five thousand dollars. So I wouldn't have to put a sticker on them. So that's something I'd like to present for you guys, if y'all wanna wait for the next meeting to vote on it. And I know it's all of a sudden, um but it's, it would be more coinciding with what we're already doing on the financial status. We only report five thousand above on the financial status. So y'all wanna vote on that now, it's correct. You don't, you wanna think about it, that's fine too. The second item I've got, I just passed out. We've received a valid adjustment. We received a value adjustment board petition. The first, uh, I think it was the eighth of November, uh, which was after we had, uh, already closed the value adjustment board, we'd already met, we'd already sent all the reports in. Uh, didn't know what, quite what to do with it, so I sent it to our attorney, Mrs. Skutchen, and, uh, she sent me back. Uh, as you can see, I got it divided up into two pieces. Uh, the second thing in there, the big thick thing, she sent me back a bunch of, uh, legalese, basically there's two requirements. They had to have a good cause and it's not supposed to hinder the board in their action. Well, they probably have a good cause because they're saying it was a hurricane, you know, there was a development, I mean, a property management company in Southwater that's looking at this piece of, that's overseeing this piece of property. The second item, uh, was not hindered the board, but I think we've already adjourned the board, we've already sent all the reports to, uh, Tallahassee. Uh, I also, Mr. Beck is not here today, but she, her attorney basically said the same thing as Mr. Martha. So I wanted to bring it to the board, I'm just a clerk, so I wanted to let y'all know what was going on. Um, see y'all can give me some, uh, direction on what you want me to tell this individual.
The chair will entertain a motion.
And, and I will add that this particular company, if you'll look, the top piece is, uh, is the application that they send in, uh, Archway Partners, but if you flip the next page, it's, uh, a check from Ryan, which we received several other applications from the Ryan group during this time. I remember Mr. France was on the UNRWA's board and Mr. Crutchfield was on the value adjustment board. So you see.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Do you see any reason that we should consider this at a later, at a late date, not a later date, but a late date? Uh, personally, I don't, but I'm not an attorney, uh, the two attorneys that I consulted with both said that, you know, it did not meet the second criteria. But, again, I'm not an attorney, so if, if, you know, what the pledge is approved. Other, I, I tell you how other board value adjustment boards don't close the board. You know, they'll leave in January, even February, the board may be able to elaborate on this. But since you guys closed and we signed and sent the second, um, I forget what the term is, but the second certification of the property tax rolls already been sent in, uh, your attorneys were basically saying, you know, it's kind of a done deal.
I'm, I'm going to show my ignorance, um, but I'm assuming that the, the value adjustment process basically gives somebody the capability to uh, appeal what the value of the property is.
That, that's correct.
And they've got to do that by a certain amount of time.
Yes, sir.
They miss that timeline.
Yes, sir.
And so they're requesting an extension to go through that process?
Yes, sir. Did they file for other pieces of property? Pardon me? Did they, did this same company file for other pieces of property? The Ryan company did not, but I, I don't know exactly how that works, but Archway Partners did not, Mr. Savino, uh, did not. But Ryan Company, uh, it's on the second page, the check, uh, came from the. So, it's.
They, this is the only one they didn't get in the pen.
Yes.
But they need a time.
Yes, sir, I think he, he's pretty evident that he knows he's following the label, um, on the letter that he is, that's on the top, you know, he's trying to use the good cause appeal request, which is a valid request, but it can't hinder, my understanding, it just can't hinder the, the value adjustment board in doing their job. And, you know, you guys, uh, the value adjustment board, which two of you are members of, two from the school board and the two private citizens have already adjourned the meeting and we signed all the reports, I think, this, uh, like, Mr. Crutch, somebody signed, I can't remember, Mr. Crutch will sign those reports when we got them sending in.
And so as the, as a result of receiving this, I'm assuming that they are not in agreement with the value that was, uh, given to their property?
That is correct, um, I wish Mr. Beck was here this morning, I went and talked to her, um, you know, she said she would have been glad to present, uh, because they, they had documentation, uh, but they actually paid more for permit fees than they have it assessed at right now.
I think the problem on our side is going to be that there's, there's no statutory authority, there's no process that's given to us for how to sort of reopen the value adjustment board and its proceedings, because we've already, we're finished with all that business and we've certified those tax rolls, we're done with that. And so there's nothing that I can look to or that the value adjustment board attorney can look to, or the property appraiser attorney can look to and say, this is the process to follow in order to reopen these proceedings and uncerify or recertify it. So, as Clay said, they met, they've met the first criteria that the hurricane, you know, coming through where they do business, that's probably a good cause. But the second criteria that it can't be prejudicial to the value adjustment board's business is not met, because none of, none of the attorneys involved can find any process for you all to follow to reopen the proceedings this year for the value adjustment board. So, and I, I'm not really keen on Jackson County making case law on something like this. We, we may get sued, but.
Well, and, and they have a right to file a circuit civil case, um, and, and I just want to be able to notify Mr. Savino, uh, that we're not going to re-convene the board, that it's already been sent in, tax rolls have already been certified, and that his next option would be to file, uh, court case.
And certainly, it, if a judge has a mechanism that they want us to follow, we will follow that mechanism and will look to the court to tell us what process they want us to follow.
Is more or less a contract involved, is that correct?
Uh, it's not a contract, I think it's more of a procedure, uh, that's been outlined, uh, outlined throughout the years, you know, this is what you do, this is what you accept. Um, if, if we were a bigger county, so we were still holding value adjustment board, uh, hearings, I think it would be a different matter, but we held our, our meetings, we resolved all the petitions, we certified the tax roll, we sent that to Tallahassee. So ours is a little, it'd be like somebody filing for these other counties in June of next year. So it's not really a contract, it's just procedures of what things are handled further with the partner revenues guideline.
Mr. Ruff, you have a time guideline in terms of when this must be resolved?
Um, I, I, I think for his purposes, there's some, uh, guidelines for him filing a court case, I, I don't really know what those are. But for us, I, I just want to be able to notify him, I, I don't even know that, that I, I need anything voted, I bring it to your attention. Um, unless you tell the value adjustment board to reconvene, um, I'm going to notify him that these are steps, this is what's presented, and that his force of action will be filed in court case. Unless you directly with some others.
It causes a major problem, we just table this until the next meeting?
Um, to be truthful, I'm not sure, but I can notify him so he'd be put on notice that.
Yeah, I think my preference would be that you don't table it, only because my position's not going to change that there isn't any statutory process for us to reopen the bad proceedings. So there, there's nothing on our side that I'm going to be able to provide to you in order to give you any additional information to make a different decision. The other thing is that the applicant has time limitations for him to go into the circuit court, and it's really better for y'all to make your decisions so that they can make their next decision as to whether or not they want to appeal this to the next level.
So we don't, we don't need to deny this request as a board?
I, I don't think they're needed to deny, do they, Michelle, or do they?
I mean, just, the, the decision would be to not accept the, um, the late file petition.
Well, and, and I, I, you know, better need with the decision for them to be saying, we're not going to reconvene the board?
Yeah.
Because really the board should accept or deny, I, I don't know, tell me.
It, it, if this pertaining to the, you know, we came in and, and that nobody, you know, they're supposed to be here a certain time.
But no, no, this, this is not a petition that was filed at that time. This petition did not get followed until November the eighth when I received it, and then I started doing the research on what we needed to do, what the procedures were for us to carry on. So they, we did not have this petition when you guys made it.
It was in the legal date.
Pardon me?
Illegal time and date of the petition.
No. Yeah, it, it, it was, it was, uh, filed after the appropriate date. And he had, he had asked for an exception, and you guys had already finished what y'all were supposed to do. So the board would have to be reconvened, and as Ms. Jordan said, there's really no procedures for reconvening after you've sent in the second certification.
Just out of curiosity, the, the value adjustment board map, how many different, uh, requests did you consider?
We had thirteen original petitions, we had, uh, nine of those were withdrawn, I'm thinking, I'm getting ready to make sure I've got my numbers right, nine of those were withdrawn or settled with the property appraisers office, there were four that weren't, and they did not show up on the day that we had them.
Nor called.
Or called or emailed.
Down to one.
No, it was down, well, this one came in November the eighth, which we'd already sent everything in.
And, and then there were, there was only time, did you? Stagger, stagger, and we had to stay here the whole, right on through the whole process, because it staggered out. We even thought about, you know, having all come in and we, they could take numbers and take them as they can, you know, and not know a certain time. Because that way, if they wouldn't hear it a certain time then, we wouldn't have to stay here all day. Just wait to see if somebody showed up and they didn't show up.
We scheduled those thirteen petitions every fifteen minutes, and we consolidated them, but we still haven't worked till all of them.
So then this is, this came in late, as a petition.
Oh, yeah, I have to read our clothes out of the board, I think.
Based on that, yeah, I recommend that we not consider it.
Yeah.
That was a motion, your motion was not reconvened, right?
Right.
All in favor of that motion?
That is all I have.
Thank you, sir.
I will come back to y'all on the, uh, fixed assets through the next meeting.
If they're, relative to this, Clay, there's no critical timeline, if we take care of this, uh, at the next board meeting in January.
Take care of what?
This, this, uh, yeah, this.
Uh, the fixed asset part?
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there's no timeline on that, you take care of it at the next meeting.
All right. Everybody up there? Everybody want to say something?
I got a couple. Okay, you want to go ahead? I don't have any, no. I've had a couple of instances, uh, Jeffrey and Rhett, I'm not sure who, who this would need to go to. Uh, I know that DOT just recently constructed sidewalks, sidewalks along Highway ninety as part of that, uh, resurfacing project. And I know the last time that Highway seventy-three was resurfaced, they extended sidewalks south from, I guess, around the courthouse, down the hill, I think across the railroad track to South Street. And with the, with the housing developments that are, that have occurred, uh, in those, uh, I don't know if they're, the housing, the multifamily housing, there's quite a bit of pedestrian traffic walking along the edge of the road. And the last, uh, last couple of times, there's, there's, I think we need to request DOT in some form to install sidewalks. Uh, you know, from, from probably Orchard Point all the way back to where it terminates now. How can we give that request to them, is that a level that?
We have a, um, safety, uh, what's it called?
There, the exact project was brought up at our last community safety traffic team.
Okay.
Meeting, which was a few weeks ago, uh, DOT was present, so we brought that up, um, they're looking at which department under the DOT could investigate it, um, so we'll follow up and see where that's progressing.
Would it be beneficial to have the chairman send a letter to someone over there, or would that not do any good?
I mean, it never hurts, but I think we should identify which route to go first, so we can detail it, I don't know.
Okay.
But we could follow up with a letter for you, you all to approve sending, once they tell us which department.
I just know, Sunday afternoon, late Sunday afternoon, I was coming back and there was a family with two children and two adults, and they were, they're walking right along the edge of that, uh, and I just, you know, would hate to have somebody injured because of the result of that, and, uh, with all the money they spent on sidewalks on Highway ninety, that's, uh, uh, to me, that would be a, a much better investment.
Generally, they have a different pot of money for the sidewalks anyway, and it's usually tremendous.
Yep.
Uh, I served on the transportation committee in the legislature, and, uh, with all that sidewalk money, I was going, road money, road money, quite obvious. But, uh, they'll work with us. Of course, we had a man named Edward Prescott that time, he's one of the finest people you'll ever know.
Also, I noticed, uh, Willam, that, uh, we did get the lot that the county owns next to the library, south of the library cleaned, I think that looks a lot better. There is a, there is some, um, it looks like stone coping.
I don't know what it looks like.
I, I tell you what I think it is, when the last addition was done, the signs made note, on top of the parapet wall, there is precast concrete coping, I think that's leftover from that job.
Okay.
I, I don't know that, but, uh, probably needs to be maybe moved from that site and taken out to, uh, uh, public works if we can do that, but it looks a lot better.
Looks a lot better.
So, I'm at your.
Anybody here? Anybody in here want to say anything?